Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting of June 22, 2017. Please rise for an invocation by Councilman Skip Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, as we come here this evening, we just want to thank you for all of the blessings that you give us each day.
We are so thankful to live in this country despite all of the daily issues that must be addressed. As we come here this evening to conduct the business of the city and with some of the important issues that we will be dealing with this evening, we would ask, Father, that you give us the wisdom, knowledge, and the courage to do what is best for our city residents. We ask all of these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Excuse me, thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated June 8, 2017. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
Come over.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions by members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had four requests to speak this evening, and I'll take those in order. And let me just say, as always, each person is asked to limit their comments to three minutes on an item that is on the agenda this evening. And I'd also like to say that, especially for those in the audience who are watching on television, you may see a couple of names that are a bit unexpected on here. It's been a long tradition of City Council that when informed candidates have, I think, from what I'm told, for decades respected the tradition, although there's no requirement under the law that current candidates not take the opportunity, and they're right to speak, so as to keep as much as possible the politics and the governance of the city as separate. But as I indicated, that is their right, and in the case of one of the individuals, the other was made known that that kind of tradition was being changed. And so we have two candidates that will be speaking this evening, which is a bit different than what that long tradition has been. But because there's nothing in the law that prevents it, they have a right to present their case before City Council, like any citizen of Williamsport. I just wanted to comment on that because it's a change from what we've seen in the past and one that I think we all participated in as candidates. So the first request to speak this evening is Allison Hirsch. Who's found her way up?
I stood up because I was trying to save time.
Sure, absolutely. So if, as always, give her your name and address for the record, and then three minutes.
Allison Hirsch, 423 Rural Avenue, between the hospital and Brandon Park. I'm here today because I care about this city, and I represent 122 members of Williamsport Citizens for Home Rule. We've been meeting, it was a much smaller group when we first started, but we've been meeting for about three years discussing the issue of home rule and putting together a plan to put a petition on the ballot. So we were somewhat surprised when City Council had its own proposal, and we want to ask you if you want to, I guess, work with us and hear our voices before you put the ordinance on the ballot finally, before you put the referendum on the ballot. I have passed out a handout, if not all of you got it, somebody might have copies they could pass out. But home rule for Williamsport, in introduction, I think it's important to lay aside some basic misconceptions about home rule. The basic concept of home rule is relatively simple, and this is quoting from a state government document. "The basic authority to act in municipal affairs is transferred from state law, as set forth by the General Assembly, to a local charter adopted and amended by the voters." And one thing I want to make clear is that home rule would be laid over, or under, however you want to put it, the four optional forms of government. It's not in opposition to the four optional forms of government, which are strong mayor, weak mayor, commission, and council city manager. It could coexist with any one of those systems, but the flexibility that it would give us is to make variations in those systems. So there could be variations on those systems. I personally, I think a lot of Williamsport citizens would agree that we don't want to be dictated to by the state as to what our city government should look like. We should have the option to design a city government of our own. We should have our own charter. And the only way we can do that is by home rule. I'm a little confused by the language of the council's statement referring to a charter because every time I've asked to see a charter for the city of Williamsport, it doesn't seem to exist. And I believe it's a generic charter set down by the state third-class city codes. And the point I made the other night that I want to reiterate is, a lot of people don't understand, I didn't understand, when I first moved to Williamsport, I heard "third-class city," and I thought, wow, is that demeaning? That's horrible. And then I found out there are only three cities in the state of Pennsylvania that are not third-class cities, and it refers to size only. But as far as pride in the city, I think a lot of people here feel that we're a first-class city, and I think we should feel that. And I think the way to get more people to feel that is to get more people involved in government. And the way to get more people involved in government is to open up all the possibilities to them, including home rule. So my basic point, you know, and I drew up this little chart of what the comparison would be between the two systems, but basically, home rule would give us much more flexibility. It would give us the ability to design our own government for our own municipality. And so I would ask you to please put aside the ordinance that you've already written, and I know you've all worked really hard on that, and I feel terrible saying this, but I wish that we had known that you were doing it earlier, and we would have come to talk to you much earlier. Set that aside and restart the process, and start by setting up a government study commission under the home rule law, because I believe you're using a different law to set up a charter commission study. Is that right? You'll clarify afterwards. So that's, I'm just begging you to please, you know, start over and don't take a long time about it, but give the voters all of the options that the state lays out for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, excuse me. The next name on the list is Steve Shope. Name and address for the record, as you know.
Steve Shope, 608 Hawthorne Avenue. Dr. Williamson, members of council, I promise you this is not a campaign speech. My comments are very objective, and I will limit it to that. My concern tonight is not with whether or not a new form of government or a possible home rule charter is in the best interest of Williamsport, but rather the process by which has been undertaken. Most citizens right now are completely unaware of the magnitude of the process that you've initiated, and I believe based on a relatively small number of people who have had conversations with you over the years about possibly changing our government, we've entered into this. Over the course of many years, as you've all had said, but you've suddenly decided to act upon this, and all within three weeks' time, you've passed the first, the ordinance on the first reading, had a single town hall meeting to educate the public, and tonight you'll have a second reading, and all in three weeks' time. My concern is, is that the people just simply have not been educated about this enough to go to the polls. You've said that you're initiating a process and that you want the people to decide, but really, there's not been a lot of time allotted or a lot of effort put forth to actually educate them so that they can make informed decisions. Again, you say you want the people to decide, but you've chosen the election cycle with the lowest voter turnout historically for them to decide. And most importantly, and the reason for my comments tonight, is that you want to let them decide, but you've been very selective in what you are allowing them to choose from. I'm not advocating for a home rule charter, I'm not advocating for a change of government, but if you're going to give them such a serious ballot question, the code very clearly says that you can include a question that simply offers all of the options. That is one of the options that you can put forward, and I find it a little disheartening that you've decided that they should only hear of one of those options, and that's to explore the form of government rather than the home rule charter. Again, I'm not advocating for either, but if you're going to give the citizens of Williamsport such a choice on the ballot this fall, give them all the options, because I think they're entitled to it, and that's all that I would ask for you tonight. I'm asking City Council to vote no on tonight's ordinance and to rewrite a new ordinance that gives them all of the options, and let them choose properly in November what's right for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next name on the list is Matilda Noviello.
Good evening, members of the council administration. I apologize.
And just, just.
Oh, my name is Matilda Noviello.
And address, please.
363 Union Avenue.
Thank you.
I apologize if I'm disrespecting any tradition, I wasn't aware of that. But as Allison Hirsch and Steve Shope have said, I'm also agreeable to the fact that the voters should have the choice to, they should have all options available to them. And I ask you tonight also to abandon this ordinance start over and ask question number three in home rule law, which asks for a charter commission to not only study and maybe select the four options, but also to add home rule charter to that. I think that home rule can exist with the other options, and you've mentioned timing is an issue in terms of the election cycles, and you didn't want it to interrupt the mayoral election cycle. I see this as a non-issue because the 18th month process could continue during these election cycles, and the best part is if home rule were to come to pass, the electorate would have the opportunity to recall a candidate if they're not doing their job. So I see this as like a huge win. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next name on the list is Jeremy Muller. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeremy Muller. I live at 821 Center Street, Williamsport, Pennsylvania. Greetings, councilmen and women, and mayor, and everybody else. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my desire after learning about home rule and the options it could provide us. I live within a community full of diversity, rich, poor, middle class, and I don't have a class. I'm among them. I am one of them. I see a better future for Williamsport under home rule. We should join the 71 other municipalities in Pennsylvania and at least see what this type of citizen-driven government is about. Due to the changing social, economic, political, environmental landscapes, we too must change and cast away our unwillingness to explore both new and tested forms of government and adopt policies that better manage our infrastructure than our current strong mayor does. We need to ask home rule type of city government if it's for us. I ask you, the City Council, to please delay this vote and start over. We have this one opportunity to become a more thoughtful, aware, and understanding community. We have many voices who haven't been heard or left out of the governmental process, and we all know somebody, I'm sure. Their voices will surely be heard if we explore a home rule type of government. We hope you will put home rule into the referendum. If not, we are prepared, as citizens, a referendum on the ballot. We have been gathering petition signatures this week and are finding a good deal of support. So God bless all of you, and we hope that you can side with progress.
And thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have appointments, although as discussed with members of the administration and members of council, we had a scheduling snafu with Mr. Burkholder. He was unable to attend, and no fault of his own, one of the committee meetings this week after all of us thinking that he could, including him, and so we're simply going to continue that onto the agenda two weeks from now without any need for action one way or the other this evening. And I think I have, I've cleared that with Celester, so if he nods, I haven't done that wrong. So we'll move on to the next item of the agenda. I'm going to move it around a little bit. I'm going to move down to number 11, resolution honoring John Greto. And so I know what you said, Janice, but I just want to.
Go ahead.
I'll let you.
Then I'll ask for the motion.
As many of you know, Mr. Greto has served the city for a couple weeks, for many, many years, and many, many roles, and he's done so with a grace and a distinction that almost none of us can match. While we like to tease him about the thoroughness in which he informs us about the rationale behind the things he's asked us to do, we really do respect the work that he does and the way he goes about doing it. And so council has put together a resolution honoring his service to the city, and I'd like to read this. So honoring John Greto. Whereas John Greto has served the city of Williamsport since 1978 and has held a number of critically important positions in city government during that time, most notably serving as city engineer and as community development director. And whereas John Greto, the very essence of a public servant, has served with grace and distinction with the best interest and welfare of the citizens of the city of Williamsport as his goal. And whereas John Greto has made critically important contributions to every aspect of the city, ranging from the city's infrastructure to its economic growth and the quality of life of its citizens. And whereas City Council and the city of Williamsport will sorely miss John Greto's unparalleled knowledge of the city, its prior projects, its infrastructure, and the underlying rationale behind each. And whereas, as a result of John Greto's dedication and service, the city of Williamsport, a city with a proud past, is left with a much more promising future. Now therefore be it resolved, at our meeting assembled this 22nd day of June 2017, Williamsport City Council does hereby acknowledge and express, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Williamsport, our deep appreciation and gratitude for his substantial contributions to our community and our best wishes for his future endeavors. And further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to spread the resolution on the minutes of this meeting and present a copy of this resolution to John Greto. And, let me add, be it further, that the city clerk shall now ask for a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
Can I have a motion?
Come on.
A second. And a second. Thank you.
Comments and questions from members of council, please. Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith.
I've had the pleasure of working with John for quite a number of years, being on the Public Works Committee and as Chair of the Public Works Committee. John being a professional engineer, and I'm an engineer in a different type of discipline. However, we still speak the same language in a lot of areas. John and I have worked many, many projects, going back to the camera project, to the MS4, to the levee study, to Gravius Run, and other city projects. And over the years, it has been a pleasure to work with John. John is a very knowledgeable person in his discipline. He's very easy to work with, and we've accomplished many things working together along with the committees and along with the full council's approval. So I just want to say thank you, John, for all the years that you've given to this city, all of the knowledge that you have given to this city. And yes, you will be missed, however, I think we'll be seeing your face occasionally in City Hall. So enjoy your retirement. I know you're not going to retire completely, which we're happy about, but again, I want to thank you for all of the work that you have done. It's just so much appreciative we are of the thoughtfulness, the individual attention that you've given projects, how you've saved us money on some of the projects rather than going out and having, hiring a consultant. I can remember in one of the meetings when we said it was going to cost, I think, $5,000 or $8,000 to have a letter written, and I looked at you and said, John, you've got that capability to do that. And John wrote the letter, and it was accepted by the Army Corps of Engineers. We knew John could do it. He wanted to do it. He saved us money. Over the years, there's a lot of innovations he's come up with for the city, and we'll be ever grateful for the service that you've given this city, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council? Mrs. Katz.
John, we should all conduct ourselves with such calmness and be so methodical. You're such a great example of a gentleman, and I always love the smile that you come off with. Sometimes I wonder if you're deeply thinking or if you're thinking of something else, which is can be very dangerous. But it's been a joy working with you. You've taught us a lot. You've been, you've been there through so many projects, and your picture here with the drink is where I think we'll be seeing you. And thank you very much again.
Mr. Noviello.
I think John sort of defines the word multitasking. I don't know anyone that has done as many different things out of one seat as he's done. I've been here just for my eight years. I don't think I've ever heard him once raise his voice in anger or in angst in any way. Frankly, as Mr. Smith sort of mentioned, he's got sort of a calming effect on us at our meetings, and that's always been a pleasure to observe and to be part of, because sometimes in meetings, as we all know, can get rather tense and spark on occasion. So we've been very grateful, at least from my part, to be able to work with John before he finally decides to pass the gauntlet on. So again, John, thank you for all the years of service, and as Mr. Williamson has said, we do and will expect to see you on occasion around here. So he's not necessarily getting away scot-free at least at the time. Thank you.
I'm told at least two months, though we have to not show up at his house. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson.
I haven't known John as long as probably most of the people in this room, but in the short time that I have known him, I have, I've learned a lot. And I think of professionalism, I think of expertise, creativity, stability. He just does his job well, and that's, as if that wasn't enough, then you have the icing on the cake, and that he is compassionate and gracious, understanding. He's a gentleman in every way, and so as a result, everybody likes to work with him. And so it's, it's been very enjoyable, and you will be missed, and we look forward to following after in your footsteps to kind of show some of those same characteristics in order to have a, an orderly and efficient and professional government. And so we thank you so much.
Other comments? Mr. Allison.
I remember probably one of the first times I got to know John was when our, our sons were both playing Little League. So it's way back in the way back, but, and I knew who you were, you know, we knew each other, but to be able to interact on that level tells you a lot about a person, and he's the same guy no matter where he is, which he's a genuine, what you see is what you get. But when I think about what he's done in and for this city, I thought about that phrase that knowledge is power, and this man has, the institutional knowledge that he has of not just Williamsport, but our area is immense. And we joke about, when we ask John a question, you just, you know, relax and get ready because you're not just going to get the particular answer you are asking for. You're going to get all the background information, but it's because that's who he is. I mean, it's the fiber of the person that he is, and it's the indication of his intellect and his professionalism, his ability, but to the definition of what kind of person he is, is he's had that power and ability, but he's never exercised it for his own benefit to benefit any particular interests. You can tell when you speak to him, he loves the city. He loves Williamsport. He knows and can do so much that he's learned over the years here. He could have parlayed that into a pretty good paying gig in a lot of private industry situations or even other public industry. It's no, it's no secret, but we didn't talk about it, but he was way underpaid for what he knew and what he.
We can talk about it now.
Yeah. But everybody knows that. You know, I've talked to some professionals about the replacing John, which we're not going to be able to replace this person, but to replace him with people, and that's what it's going to be, that can get, accomplish the things that need to be done. He's been a great blessing to this city, and it's been a labor of love on his behalf. And there's so much you could say, he just draws it out of you, but everything about this man is genuine, and it's the best, he represents the best of this city, and it's something we can all emulate and would do well to do. And we certainly wish him and Debbie and all his family a great, great future, and we're sure it is ahead of you. And of course, we're going to keep the lines open.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy.
Yeah, I think before I first ran for City Council eight or nine years ago, or whatever it was, I believed that John Greto might have been the only name I'd ever heard as a member of city government. And Marsha talked a lot about you, John. But, and so when I first, when I first came to council meetings, it's like, okay, I know that one. And, and you never let me down. Marsha was, was a fervent admirer. I think we always have an eye for decent, smart, kind guys, and we, the city has been exceptionally lucky to have had, well, certainly more than one of those, but one truly wonderful man on staff, and for the last, for the last several decades, and, and a Brooklyn boy, no less. I can't, I still can't believe you wound up here. He kept the accent, but he stayed in Williamsport. So, anyway, I, I think that would be my, my overwhelming sense of, of the eight years that I've had to work with John Greto is that I'm lucky. I'm lucky he put up with me when I first got elected and didn't know what the heck I was talking about. I'm lucky he told me over and over again where the bike paths went in the city, because there isn't a map anymore, so John's the only one who knows. Until now, we have one again. Thank you, John. And, and if I'd been a little luckier, perhaps I would have retained all of those tiny bits of information that aren't written down anywhere and that, and that we, we won't lose when he retires, because we will be able to ask him, but we're going to have to make it through at least two months, and, and John, it's going to be a rough one before one of us calls you and says, so could you remind me again when that ordinance that we passed eight years ago? How many, how many things do we have related to Kohl's? So, anyway, thank you very much, John. And we, we've been truly fortunate to have your company, and, and we will miss you when you go, and we probably won't let you go far.
And I want to add something, and then, I know the mayor, after we're done with the resolution, would also like to say something, but before I say something, City Council has one staff member, and Mrs. Frank asked to have an opportunity to speak as well.
John, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you coming over in the mornings and talking about the gen- about the agenda. And when I first showed back here, you were a godsend, the one person I could turn to and trust. John Grado's one of the nicest people you're ever gonna meet. And I always tell you to say one thing, John. When you get before council, say...
I have nothing more to add.
And I am gonna give him an opportunity to speak here for a second, and, and I'm not gonna cut him off, like usual. The only restriction, in fact, that I asked of him this time is that you not break the record that Marlene Whaley set. Allow that. But otherwise, you can talk for as long as you'd like. And, and I'm also not gonna reiterate what was said by my colleagues. I, I think they did a great job to enumerate the reasons behind why I said to someone earlier, I think this is Frank, "Those are the reasons why I could not imagine somebody who works for the city who would be considered more beloved than he is by all of his colleagues and all of the people like members of council that rely on his knowledge and his diligence and all of those adjectives that were applied to get things done and know why things were done in the past, and to know that moving forward as a city, it is always about the city and not about personal agendas, not about politics, not about hidden ideas. It's simply, what is the task that needs to happen today to build on what happened yesterday and get ready for what happens tomorrow?" And all of the projects that I've worked with you, I've seen that over and over and over again, and I've enjoyed every one of them, even when we get to tease you every once in a while. So, on behalf of myself and for council, thank you so much. We should probably let him talk before we, well, maybe you want us to vote first. So, if there are no other comments from members of council, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if anybody's taking a picture of your family over here. Oh, the camera went a bit away.
I'm not sure. I am at a loss for words, but I, I did, I did wanna say how great it's been and how thankful I am to have the opportunity to really have a career with the city. You know, 39 years ago, I did start here. It's kinda funny. I was listening to the news today, and tomorrow is the anniversary, anniversary of Agnes, the Agnes flood. And that's how I actually came here, after Agnes inundated and really flooded and devastated, really, the Pennsylvania areas, but Wilkes-Barre through the city. I was, worked for PennDOT, or I had applied at a school. And so, I, I've really, and I worked there for five years doing repair work, basically, when they were doing the repair work after Agnes. And now, here we're work, as Councilman Smith says, you know, flooding and the protection that the city had gotten through Agnes. We're trying to, you know, maintain that flood protection project to make sure that we have, that the next flood, you know, we're able to handle that. I mean, and for all those years, you know, the city and, and working with the department, the streets and parks, flood control, and, and many of the staff that's been here through those events, and Tommy knows, because he's, he's probably, he was christened up in Graffius Run being knee-deep as that almost comes over the top. You know, I've been in those positions, so I know how Tommy feels. And, you know, and I know the staff is great. The board members that I've worked with, the other, and many of the council people through the years, and the mayors, you know, everybody's got the city at heart, you know, no matter what. You know, we may argue a little bit and have differences of opinion, even as you go through this charter commission. Ultimately, what I've seen is everybody has the city at heart, and they, you know, they, they wanna do what's good for it. So, I won't, I'm not gonna go as long as Marlene, but I do wanna thank everybody for that opportunity to raise my family here. I am an import. I did come from Brooklyn and New York, and I just, I really liked the community and wanted to stay. It's, and just having that opportunity to raise my family here. And I'm, like you said, I'm not far. I'll be on the porch. Everybody can come by, ask me any advice that they need. So, if...
Do we have to bring beer? Do we have to bring beer?
No, I've got a tap, so don't worry. So with that, and just the one other comment, you know, because I, I know I do tend to go on and, and get more involved in what's the conversation is. I can remember Mike Casale Sr. was the city solicitor, and he always said, "John," he says, "you know, if somebody asks you for time, you'll tell them how to build a clock." And I've done that for 38 years. So, you know, with that, I do appreciate, and the kind words that council really has said tonight. So, thank you.
City council, members of the general public, we're not done yet. First of all, if I could have Mrs. Grado come up here as well, and let's give a round of applause, because Debbie has been very supportive of her husband over the years. When I think of John Grado, I think of Dick Clark. This guy never, never ages. He looks terrific. He hasn't changed over the years. And when I talk about putting time in this city and recognizing Mrs. Grado, I wanna thank you, because I know for many years, John has never been a nine-to-five worker. He comes in early, he leaves late at night. Many of the projects that we have worked over the years, we've kept them here. I remember sometimes seven, eight o'clock, especially with the Kohl's project. So, he's a guy that really loves this city, puts the time in, has worn many, many hats. One of the hardest working persons I've ever met in my life. And it's been truly an honor to work with you for the past 21 years. Twelve as a city councilman, nine as mayor of this great city. And from Brooklyn to Williamsport, John, thank you for making a wonderful difference in this city. And I have the Mayor's Award for Achievement to John Grado, in recognition of extraordinary dedication and performance that has resulted in meaningful public service to the citizens of this great city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and further recognition that such service represents the highest standard of commitment to national and community well-being, and provides a selfless, and I'm gonna emphasize that again, a selfless example of the principles and ideals necessary for the preservation of our great heritage and the improvement of our society. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And we've got him for another week or two. Okay. Okay, um, finding my place here. Then, move around a little bit more. For others that may be in the audience, I'm gonna ask Mr. Girardi to come up for one or two items, well, two items, I guess it is. The first item is a certificate of appropriateness for 468 Williams Street. Mr. Girardi?
Yes. Good evening, President Williamson and members of council. What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request for 468 Williams Street. This request is, the owner is adding seven windows to the first floor area. The windows will match in color, size, and look as the existing windows in the building. And they need to provide a new second floor means of egress. The ones they have now is a steel fire escape. They're providing a main means of egress off that back second floor. I have attached photos of the renderings. All the colors will remain the same. The first photograph you have is what the building looks like presently. The top photograph shows you that big, long wall which faces north. That's the wall where most of the windows will be on. And I have also attached a sheet, a rendering showing what it will look like. And I'm not sure, I did talk to the architect and the representative. They could not attend tonight. They were at the planning commission meeting. And this was reviewed by the planning commission. I do not believe we have an owner here. So, correct? The architect was gonna try to get hold of the owner. Apparently, she could not make it either. So, if you have any questions of me, I'm more than happy to try to answer that.
Okay. And, and just to be clear, we don't have a requirement that they be here on the certificates of appropriateness?
That's correct. Only on the demolition.
Right. Thank you. And so, with that, I'll take a motion in a second to approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Don't move. Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Just one quick question, Mr. Girardi. So, they're adding windows on what looks like the east wall. Is that predominantly? Okay.
Yes. And then there's two that'll be facing the rear, which is to the east. And the other windows will be towards the north, facing the farmer's market.
The North Street elevation or the north-facing elevation? Sorry.
It'll be the north elevation, or the elevation facing north. Okay, so if you're at the actual farmer's market, looking at the building, you will see the windows.
So the one, so we don't have a, we don't have an illustration of that, right?
No.
Okay. Got it. That's what I was trying to establish. But, but they're similar in appearance, and they're similar.
That's correct.
Are they adding one to the brick portion of the building, or to the lower portion of the building?
It's to the first-floor building, the white section.
The, the white section.
Yep.
Okay. Windows generally seem to be a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the certificate, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Next on the agenda is certificate appropriateness for 201 Basin Street. Mr. Girardi?
Yes. This certificate appropriateness request is for the property located at 201 Basin Street. The owner is Basin Street Associates, Inc. Their request is to paint the whole entire building two colors, which I have attached the sheet to. You'll see they are earth tones. One's a brown, one's a tan. They also are gonna remove the signs, put up a new cement board, remove the old cement board, put up new cement board. That will also be painted one of the colors that he has. And he did identify the colors that are there. And I have a representative here, if you have any questions of him or myself.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve, approve this certificate?
Don't move. Second.
Heard a motion in a couple seconds. Comments or questions?
Okay, so the signage is being reinstalled, I'm assuming, as is. What is it, they're removing the signs and then, and then redoing the board underneath the signs?
Right. There's a cement board underneath it.
And reinstalling signage. Okay, got it.
Yep. And they're taking that off, and they're gonna put up a new cement board, and that would be painted the colors that he indicated on here.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Just to also clarify on that, so the business signs are staying the same. Is, is the Basin Street Shopping Center sign also staying the same?
I believe so. Am I correct? Mr. Albrano?
Okay, thank you. And that was my question. Mr. Noviello?
I just wanna quickly thank Mr. Albrano for once again stepping up to the plate. His properties throughout town have all been up to speed and, and appropriate in any, in all the respects that I'm aware of, at least anyhow. And his continued work in the communities is very much appreciated as well. So, thanks to you, John, for stepping up again. And the building always looked good to me as it is, but now we'll have a little bit better touch to it. So, I'm happy to see that you're still keeping those things in mind and making things nice for our community. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Good comment. And I'd also add, the timing is well timed because of the investments that the city and others are making, including Mr. Albrano, right in, in the Basin Street area, East Third Street Gateway. So, the timing is also good. Mrs. Katz?
I too wanna thank you. These colors are gonna really look great on that building. The signage, are any, are any of the signs gonna change? Are they all gonna stay, stay the same with the, all the businesses?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, council, mayor. The majority of the signs, yes, will change. Oh, I'm sorry, will stay the same. The only addition is we have a new tenant coming in. I alluded to it when we were here six or seven weeks ago for the Starbucks drive-through. We have a Jersey Mike's opening in about three, four weeks. So, they will be adding. And we're in process of adding a, yet another national one. So, there'll be some, some new ones. But the, the existing tenants' signage will be, be...
I wondered, because they're their logos. So, I wondered if that was gonna stay the same. Where's Jersey Mike's moving into? What part of the...
They are the second unit from the, as you look at that photo, it would be the second unit from the left side.
From the left, okay. Okay, fantastic. And thank you. Like I said, these colors are gonna look fantastic on that building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Allison?
Oh, Dr. Williamson, if you allow me, I didn't know when I was here tonight, the agenda, and if you'll allow me to deviate for a second, I just wanna give my congratulations also to John Grado. Our company history goes back literally decades with John, and more projects than we could ever count together. And he's one in a million. He is the, by far, the best at what he does. So, good luck, John. It's, it's been an honor to work with you. Sorry. Thank you, Dr.
No, that's fine. Mr. Allison?
And I, I wanna thank you as well, John, for, you've come here with many projects, but never with your hand out, always with great ideas. And you've made that a hub of economic activity, which benefits everybody in the city. And, and you're always looking to improve upon it, and, and you're doing that right now. And I just think how it's, that area will coalesce really well with other plans to, not just with the East Third Street, but giving people access from there to the Riverwalk. I've been over Panera Bread before and heard people from outside of the area wondering how they could get from there over to the Riverwalk, because they knew it was there. And, you know, someday, hopefully, that will, will be a reality for, for easy access. And it'll draw people there, as well as draw people to the city for everything they can access down there. And it's, you're the one that takes the risks and puts the money out. And it's something we couldn't do and shouldn't do, but we thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the certificate, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Thank you, Mr. Girardi.
Thank you.
We'll return to agenda item number six, ordinance authorizing and directing a vote on approval of a charter commission. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Williamsport, Leckcoming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing a vote on the approval of a charter commission and election of charter commission members to serve thereon.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this ordinance in second reading, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Dr. Williamson, do you have anything further to add? No, I'm not gonna listen to the advice Mrs. Frank gave to Mr. Grado. I did wanna address a couple things that have occurred over the last couple of weeks and, and were brought up again tonight. In terms of the timing of all of this, one of the things that we've counsel in my conversations with them, and then in the way that Mr. Allison and I made sure that the people were aware that it was gonna be on the agenda, of course, the first reading and then a town hall meeting, et cetera. We wanted to make as many people as we could in the timeframe in which these things get on an agenda and approved, aware that it existed. But we understand also that it takes time for people to be educated about something... But we understand also that it takes time for people to be educated about something as important, as someone earlier said, as, as this kind of study commission and later, whatever recommendations, assuming the voters approve it, that the commission might make. And so while early on when we thought about other timing, one of the things we decided to do it is do it early in the year, beginning of the summer, so that we would, if council approves it in second reading, we would have July and August and, and September and October to provide, everybody have the opportunity on the merits and the drawbacks of actually establishing the study commission. And then vote their conscience in November, so by having those four months, we would have more time to discuss and people become educated. So we're just initiating the project, the process of education by the timing here. Now, the timing in a four-year cycle, as I indicated in, in the town hall meeting that we had the other night, there really isn't any other timing that you can do in many respects, because synced up with, in an odd number election, with a mayoral election, it gets involved with the personalities that happen to be running for mayor. If you put it in an even number year, then it could, one possibility, and I just thought of this as I was speaking, it could get caught up in national politics in some way that I, I wouldn't even be able to anticipate. But more importantly, the one, the part that I wanted to bring up was, you don't complete the cycle of really a two-year process in, in a good timeframe. So those were important parts of, I think, the timing that drove council's action. The other thing that I wanted to address briefly was the, the issue of, of home rule versus what we've approved in first reading and, and is on the floor this evening. We had, we've had plenty of discussions with it. I mean, as, as we've indicated, there've been years and in some cases decades of discussion about this idea specifically around the form of government. But in addition to that, then, members of council in, you know, at least my conversations with one or two at a time, my colleagues over the last six, eight, nine, 10 months have thought about, is it time to do, try to initiate anything or do, not do anything? And then what should we do if we initiated something? Should we initiate what, under the optional third-class city law that the city currently works under, the process of a charter commission and the decision between the four options outlined to us under state law? Or should we initiate a, a process of home rule? And on a personal level, I mean, there are things within home rule, the flexibility in some of the areas, that I would really much appreciate. The problem is, I don't know if it's a problem, it, it, the reality is, in my discussions with others and, and the people that have talked to me over the last, I've been on council since 2008, so nine years, and, and really even before that, I've heard many people talk specifically about the form of government. And, and I sense a consensus around form of government, having a discussion around the form of government. I have not heard nearly as many people talking about changing the tax code, or changing some of the other things that were brought up tonight, and, and there are many pieces that you could change in home rule. Indeed, over the last two weeks, we initiated the process with a public announcement three weeks ago and then had the first vote two weeks. And so for the last two weeks, I've been hearing from lots of people, some of which I talked to prior, but some of which I haven't. And I've heard from three groups of people. One group said, we don't need a change. And they had different reasons for it, but in essence, we don't need a change, and so we shouldn't have a commission. And, and at the other end of the spectrum, of course, we heard tonight from others who said, we should be doing more than what council has talked about doing through pursuing a home rule. Absolutely, and, and I've listened carefully to that myself. But even in these last two weeks, I've heard from more people than either of those two categories combined that said, yeah, I don't know if I want to change form of government or not, but it is the right thing to do to study especially strong mayor versus council manager. Many of them expressed, I, I think some of those other changes are scary, or, I'm trying to remember the various ways that they said it, go too far, or we don't need, or, you know, there are a variety of ways I heard that. But more people thought the sort of middle ground study of this one specific issue that's been the topic of a lot of discussion by a lot of people for a long time was the right way to go. And so I think it is our role as representatives to try to take the best knowledge that we have and make a decision and initiate a process. But I also think we should have a discussion tonight, to the degree my colleagues want to have that, about either of the other two options, and, and let the public hear our thinking about the do less option and the do more option. And, and I'm open to changing my mind, but at this point, having heard and listened carefully, I, I think I'm still at the position where I was two weeks ago, which is to say, a middle ground option that takes, remains within what we've been under for a long time, the optional third-class city code, but studies whether the form of government that we have now should change. And then ultimately, let the public decide whether we should initiate that study, and then whether or not, if we do, whether recommendation of an unpaid elected commission should be adopted or should be rejected. And by no means is our decision tonight a final decision in any respect. It simply is the decision to start a process or to not start a process. Finally, and I know I've been talking longer, having teased John earlier, I would perfectly be willing to accept teasing now. The last thing I would say, just from a procedural standpoint, I, I think we have three options tonight as a body. Option number one is to say no and be done with it. So if you vote no, you could be voting no to say, we should not have any study happen, or we should not present to the voters the option of a study, to be precise. Option two is vote no with the intention, as was indicated earlier, that we introduce a new ordinance, as somebody said quickly, potentially in two weeks, that would be a home rule, initiating the placing of a home rule question on the ballot in the fall.
Not home rule, but itself.
Okay, a home rule oriented question on the ballot in, in the fall. And, and so to get there would also be a no vote tonight, because as the solicitor has indicated to me prior to this meeting, it's a momentous enough issue that amending tonight's ordinance in its final reading for that big of change isn't appropriate. We should start over. And I, I think the, the public who spoke earlier had heard that same advice from the solicitor, and that's why they phrased what they said the way they did then. And then the third choice that we have is to vote yes. And, and of course, this is in a final reading, and a yes vote tonight would then place this question listed in this ordinance on the ballot for November. And I should also pass along, there was a question that came out at the town hall meeting on Tuesday about whether both a council-driven question could be placed the ballot, and at the same time, a petition-driven question could be placed on the ballot. And today I heard separately, but both from the solicitor and from the state expert, that that was not possible. So I wanted to make sure that that information got out to my colleagues in a public way. And so that's my presentation for now, long as it is. I open it up for questions and comments from my colleagues on council. Mrs. Katz?
I've had my store downtown for over 17 years, and in 17 years, there really hasn't been that much discussion in my business with people questioning the form of government. It was only a few years ago where Allison Hirsch, where I found out what, what they were doing, what they were looking for a change in the government, and found it interesting of what they were doing. Did not understand a lot of the concepts at the time, just knowing that, that, that conversation was filtering through some of the community. On a whole, most people aren't even aware of, there are different forms of government, if you really look at it in that, in that perspective. The thing that I found interesting is at the town hall meeting, this was publicized, there was an op-ed in the paper, there were so many things that happened since the last reading that you would have assumed we would have had a lot of people at that meeting. The only people that were really there were the people that want to, I don't want to use the word push, but, you know, promote home rule. And it was interesting, because after the last council meeting, the one thing I did is I did go up to President Williamson and I said, the reason why I voted no is because I didn't think that the whole thing was transparent enough, because home rule wasn't involved. And I found that, you know, interesting that there were other aspects of this that should have been in, in the ordinance. I also found it interesting that when you sat there at the town hall meeting, one of the things that disturbed me is that you had Forrest Lehman from voter registration who came up and, there's so much that has to be prepared, but they're not prepared for what would transpire with this immediately. And they have, he's looking at his solicitor, how are we going, how are they going to go about all of that? So there, there's aspects of this that the ducks aren't in line yet for that. As far as how we go with the change of government, I've always looked at it this way, you've got to look at the pros and the cons. And so far, everybody is just presenting their own agenda. They're not presenting what happened to other places that maybe have done this and it hasn't come about and worked. One of the, one of the cities is Wilkes-Barre, a third-class city, which surprised me, I didn't know Wilkes-Barre was a third-class city. They tried the, the city manager, they are a home rule and they changed back to strong mayor, because they found out the city manager didn't work. For obvious reasons, I think maybe city manager works with smaller townships, maybe places like that, but when you have a larger city, I think it's a, it's a, it's a problem, it could be a problem. And I will go back to my initial statement that I said two weeks ago. I find it to go, if you do go with a city manager, that you have seven part-time people that would be, have so much power, and they would have control over one man that is hired. And we are part-time elected officials that can change constantly. And even though, you know, it doesn't happen all the time, it can. I mean, there's just so many questions with this. And I think what's happening with this right now is there's not enough information for the public. There really isn't enough information. And what information now is out there is not really clear and decisive. There's so many questions. And then since this happened two weeks ago, I mean, my lord, the phone hasn't stopped ringing, and people have been in my store constantly, I'm not going to have been able to get any work done because of all the questions. And there are a lot that I can't answer because there's so much involved. I mean, I have not had time to study the home rule, everything, I just saw some of the things that I've researched, but there's a lot involved in home rule. When you get involved in the other forms of government, you know, you look, what you want to look at is, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. You want to look at other cities, how did this work and what didn't work? And this is what I don't think we have been doing. And this is why I voted no last time. So this is, what is your term, would you say, John? That's all I have, right now. But this is, this is why I question this. I don't think it's complete, I think there's a lot more that has to be done if we're going to do this. I'm done.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just to address, but, well, a handful of things from all over this meeting so far. And John, I'm probably not going to bring up any of your quotes, but I'm not going to make any promises. And I actually, I, I actually was not in attendance at this Tuesday's town hall meeting, in part because honestly, we, I come from a very strong family, and it was my father's birthday. But nonetheless, I heard that, that we had attendance in the neighborhood, it was 30 to 40 people, something along those lines. And, and I would mention that in discussions with Ed Fosnot, who came to us from the state and from D C E D and, and helped to lead the meeting, he had, he had actually indicated that as a rule, when he attends these sorts of meetings, which he does pretty regularly, he's had attendance as low as three, and as high as 50. But, but I would make the case that I think they're, they're actually, they're, in, in my perception, and, and for literally the past eight years, ever since I got elected, I have been approached multiple times by multiple different people, asking questions about form of government and how we can make the city function more smoothly. And, and, you know, that's, that's, everyone has their own perspective, and that, and that simply is the way that, the way that, you know, my particular encounters work, perhaps the people, the people who, who would approach me. But, but it is something that has been on my radar for a very long time, the, the form of government question in particular, because, because I've, I've received so much, so many questions and comments from the public relating to it. The, the home rule, the question of home rule came to my attention much later, actually, the person who perhaps first brought it up to me was Ed Fosnot from the state, from State D C E D. And he's a wonderful man who's exceptionally well-informed, and, and we were fortunate that he was able to attend our, our meeting on Tuesday. And I certainly hope he's not watching this, but if he is, then I would like to say to him, thank you very much for, for your time to come to Williamsport from Pittsburgh and, and, and help us with our, with our government questions. But, but I, I too, I, I share the opinion that home rule has a lot of possibilities, has, has opened up a lot of possibilities for municipalities across the state, and holds a lot of possibilities for the City of Williamsport. As I've explained to my handful of the folks, actually, who already spoke this evening, I, I think that it is a really exciting opportunity, and I do, and, and I do believe that it's something the City of Williamsport should pursue. However, I am not certain that we are at this point as, as a city in a place where it's something that we should look at this time around. I think that, that the city, that the form of government question is, is something that we can sort of tackle as, as a, as, as a democracy-expanding concept for our community. And, and then I think that, that home rule is something that we need to tackle next, because it is a broader question, because there are so many more possibilities. And, and because, because there, it's such an exciting opportunity, that I want to make sure that we have a, a government that, that is fully behind it, and, and a government that, that helps to shape it. And, but, but that said, I, I have felt strongly for some time now that, that the city should be looking to its voters to more actively participate in, in the entirety of this process, in shaping the way that our government functions day-to-day, in shaping the way that our government functions into the future. And, and consequently, I'm happy that we've opened the dialogue that we have so far, I'm happy that we've gotten all the feedback that we have so far. And, and I'm particularly happy that, at least it's my impression, both from my colleagues who did attend the town hall, and from this evening, that, that we've gotten so much informed feedback from people who are so passionate about making the city a better place. It, it always drives me crazy when we drag one another down in pursuit of some sort of higher goal that then we never get to. But I would like to think that working together to build one another and the city up, we can build something truly positive for ourselves in the future. That said, I will be supporting the, the more limited question that council has originally proposed in this particular ordinance. However, I would pledge that I will support future home rule efforts as well, when and if we can, we can examine those. I simply feel that this is the right question for the right time, and, and to address the question of time and timing and information. The exciting thing about this process, which is insanely complicated, is that it allows a truly, a, a, a pretty vast amount of time to develop opinions, to educate oneself, and in particular, for the commission which may or may not be elected in this coming November, when we decide on the ballot question, to examine the larger questions behind form of government and, and the implications that is hold for the city. So when we say that we are beginning the process, we are, I mean, we are so barely beginning the process, this, this is, this is barely the jumping off point, when, when either, when, when council undertakes this this evening, if we choose to, or when we undertake by petition, a, a separate question on the ballot, one way or the other, that, that is, is just the tip of the iceberg, and we- of the iceberg, and we have a long and a lot of discussions, and a lot of democracy-building to do from that point, into a vote, a vote perhaps in 2018, or a vote in the future, if this, if this doesn't come to pass this evening. It is, it is a really neat process, and it makes me, it makes me really excited, frankly. We, it's, we, I've done a lot of really fascinating and wonderful and interesting day-to-day stuff, and, but this, this is something that, that has a little more possibility, and it's about educating voters in the city, and it's about talking about what we want for our city, and I, I think that we pretty rarely get that opportunity in this kind of, in this kind of forum. So I thank everyone who's participated so far, and I, and I hope that we can continue to have dialogue moving forward.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
I'd probably quickly concur with all that Ms. Mealy has said, and just a few thoughts of my own. In my own experience, in, in at least a minimum, in the eight years I've been on council, a couple of years on the parking authority, and certainly years before that, while I've been involved in teaching, I've come before this body, and spoke in front of that podium a number of times. And during the course of my time sitting here in this seat, I haven't known of anyone who's been restricted, or inhibited from speaking, or providing, providing an issue, or producing an issue for council to address in any way, shape, or form. So no one's really been restricted from coming up here and standing up there, and saying their piece, just as we witnessed tonight, easily enough. Even to the extent where we kind of set aside a longstanding protocol to accommodate those voices when they've come before us. So I don't see that that's part of an argument here, and I won't say that I've heard that from everyone that I've spoken to, but it has come up in some discussions. I would assume also that anyone who is as interested in this issue of home rule, as we see being expressed tonight, would have done some research on their own, and began to find out exactly what the process entails, and as we've mentioned already a number of times, just how deeply complex it really is. There are a number of issues that I think that might prop up in the process of trying to initiate a home rule, that we might not be able to control, if in fact, we want to give freedom to the voters, which is our first and primary concern. One of those concerns that always seems to pop up in my mind, is the idea of districting our community, and having district voting. There are some, excuse me, some concerns that pop up there for me. First and foremost, if we have district voting, I'm not allowed to vote for any candidate outside my district. I'm limited to those who decide to put their name in the, in the ring. And I can't vote for anybody outside that, so even if I disagree with the stances and the points of view of a particular candidate in my district, I don't have the option of voting for someone else. That, to me, negates my democratic voting process. At the same time, if no one in the district decides to put their name in the hat, then we have another problem on hand. And as I understand it from our expert the other night, that would require that a local judge would simply appoint someone from that district. And I can't imagine not wanting to be involved, and then being appointed by a judge, how good of an effort am I going to put forward in a circumstance of that nature? So those are not the be-all and end-all of my concern, but they are a concern, and it's a concern, frankly, that I'm repeating, because I've heard it from some others at the same time. And with respect to the idea of giving people enough time to research, we're talking about four months. Dr. Williamson and I both know that most of our students do research in less than four months' time, and they come up with some pretty informative pieces of information on the occasion. So I don't see that that is much of a restriction, particularly with the effort that the group that Ms. Allison, or that Allison has been working with, they seem very diligent, very mindful, very up-to-date, and very adamant about their point of view. I think that they've been probably helping some other people so far, come to a better understanding of what we're now talking about here. As, as far as my part for this evening, I would agree with Ms. Mealy, in the sense that we have time available to us, and that we can make this first step by at least looking at this point, in a bit more of a general view, exactly what our voters are interested in looking at, and this first step is a way to get into that process. If in fact, as we see over the next four months, and then any time period afterwards, that there is a much stronger voice being presented for home rule, then I'm just as happy to look into that as we are looking into what we're looking at presently. So I don't see much in the way of restrictions here, other than maybe a little bit more time to digest something that is much more complex than we've been speaking of up to this particular point in time. It gets much deeper than that. I'm also a little concerned about the type of response we would get from some of our state representatives, who have been so helpful in our community, in our county for so many years. They might not take the same point of view as many of us are looking at and speaking about here this evening as well. So there may be some backlash there in the long run. But I do think that allowing the voters to speak to this issue on the ballot is the first, best possible way to get this process rolling and moving along. I think all of us, even though we might have some variations in our opinions, would pretty much agree on that element of this, at least anyhow. This is about the voters, and timing and such are things that sometimes are beyond our control. I think we've addressed them as best as we can at this point in time. I think the process that we have in mind now, I think will work, if we continue in the way that we have so far. And I'm certainly willing to sit down with anybody at any time, and, and listen to their points of view. Those of us on council know that we often get a lot of phone calls, I can tell you that even as I sit here at this very moment, my phone is buzzing, and the calls that I have received in the last 20 to 25 minutes, have been pretty adamant about their point of view. So people are getting their point of view acrossed. This circumstance here this evening is one that begins the process, and opens up the door for any further discussion on any other variations of what we have before us tonight. But having said as much, I will in fact, support the resolution that we have before us this evening, and will from there, from my seat. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith?
As I had made statements two weeks ago, and I'll just reiterate a couple of those, and I'm not going to take a lot of time, my statements are on the record, what I had said. This isn't something that, it was pointed out by other council members, this isn't something that we just came up with in the last couple of weeks. This has been under discussion for a few years, and as Dr. Williamson had pointed out, we've individually talked among ourselves, a couple of us, concerning this process, and is it something we should look at, and why should we look at it? And, at that point in time, and I want to go back maybe a couple of years, I asked certain residents of the city, how they felt about our form of government and how it works. And I did get response back, as other council members have said, that maybe we should take a look at, is this the best way to do it? And I think part of that has been brought out by all of the complexities that we have got to deal with today. I know, being on the Public Safety and Public Works Committee, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of time, as we pointed out with John Gredo, how hard he's worked on these public works projects, and so has the Public Works Committee, in all of these meetings and things. And, yes, things are far more complex, unfortunately, than they were numerous years ago. And, and I think there are folks out there that are realizing this, especially when they read about some of these projects that we're involved in, and how intricate, and in some cases, how costly they're going to be. And, hearing all of these things, and listening tonight to the folks that have brought out some other opinions, and, you know, I certainly don't disagree with looking at, at other opinions. And we've talked about this home rule issue. This isn't something that, among us, that we haven't discussed, because we were open to looking at all of the forms that are available to us. And again, I'm not going to change any of the statements that I made two weeks ago, and I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson?
I think we need to be careful not to assume that the, that the public, or even we in this room, want change to our form of government. And, you know, we're talking about, what are the different options, and all of these things? And, and it's, boy, it sure feels like we're all just itching to change. That is not necessarily the case. And I think we need to remember that. And, and in fact, we are not, should this, should this ordinance pass tonight, we do not start the process. In fact, what we are doing, or what we may do, is we would give the public the option of starting a process, because they can very well shut it down. They can very well say no. And, and I think that's important for us to realize. And so, the idea that we're going to, we're going to start this, this process, or we're going to go through all this, and we're going to change our government, well, I think we need to hit the brakes, slow down, and back up, because that's not what we're doing here. The reason that, that I voted yes, two weeks ago, and the reason that I intend to vote yes tonight, is because this is heavy. It's, it's a big deal, and it's, it's too much. I was quoted as saying, "I don't feel that I have the authority to shut it down." That's not to say that I doubt my authority as an elected representative to vote yes or no, that's to say that this is so heavy, and has, has such a magnitude, that my desire is to pass it on to the voters. And so, whether or not we decide to change our government, is not being debated right now. What's being debated right now, is whether or not the public has the option to do that. Now, as to the, the home rule, as, as Ms. Mealy stated, really, in essence, change takes time. And, and, you know, you can do too much too fast, and if that's a desire, that's a big change. And I have learned in, in my responsibilities as the pastor of our church, my church, for over 10 years now, that change takes time. It takes a lot of time, because people need to know what's going on. And, and as Ms. Katz mentioned, we, we need to be able to, to look into all the details, we need more information to do that. And so to that point, we have four months, should we pass this ordinance. We have four months to consider whether or not to say, "Yes, let's study it." And that's all we're doing. And so maybe in those four months, as we study as individuals, we come to the conclusion, "Hmm, I don't like the options here on this ordinance," or maybe we come to the conclusion, "You know what, it's a step in the, in the right direction, and it gives us an option to study it for a period of, what, nine months?" And, and maybe that's, that's the option, or the conclusion that we come to. But we have four months to come to that conclusion. Four months to debate it, four months to talk about it. As to our transparency leading up to this point, I feel that we have been transparent, because one of the, one of the cautions that we have is not to sway the, the public as to a personal opinion that we may have. And so, we set something up and start saying, "Well, okay, we're going to, we're going to study home rule, we're going to study..." And we do the study before we actually decide to do the study, then we've got a problem. So let's work the process as it's laid out for us, and let's work through that process, and use the accountability that is designed in this process. Let's use that accountability. My interest is in efficiency, stability, and accountability. And there's a, there's a balance that we have to try to find between those things. And perhaps one form of government is very strong on accountability, but maybe not on stability. And, and perhaps another form of government is, is pretty strong on efficiency, but maybe not as strong on accountability. All of these things we have to think about and measure out. And so, do we want to look into this? Well, I think that's, that's a question for the voters. And we have four months to decide, four months to mull this over, and decide whether or not we want to go down this road. So because it is such a heavy decision, I will vote tonight to pass it on to the voters, and so I will vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council, or questions? Mr. Allison?
I have lots of questions, but, that I unfortunately couldn't make the first meeting, so I did not have a vote. I had Dr. Williamson read, read a statement, but I will be voting tonight. And, yeah, there are, my mind goes in so many directions, and as all of us do, over this, this whole issue, because, I mean, there, there's the nuts and bolts, practical side of the process and everything, but there's philosophical questions about government in general as well, that, and I, I think some of those are answered by what Councilman Henderson said. And, and I was thinking back to the town hall meeting the other night, when Ed Fosnot got up to address it, and the first thing he said was, "First of all, everybody, in so many words, take a step back. You're not voting to change the form of government, you are voting for a study." That's what the vote in November's going to be, as Mr. Henderson said, "Vote for a study." And if the voters aren't, if the majority of citizens are not comfortable with even that, which I, and I understand that point of view, too, from people, change isn't easy. The easy thing to do would have not been to bring any of this up, by any of us, and, and say, "Well, we're going to keep what we have and try to make it work." But, we can see from our viewpoint on city council, that there are changes going to come to the city of Williamsport, whether people want them or not. And they all, some of the changes come just because generations pass on, and new generations come up. And that's happening all over the country, right now, in a lot of different institutions, in churches. Nobody's immune from this happening. A new generation coming in, that has different viewpoints, different desires, different needs. One of the things this city, we see need, is going to need to beat down the road, is amenable to those people who would, we want to live here and come, and build their homes here, and raise their families here. What are they looking for? So there's a lot of those kinds of questions that, that we all have to consider. And, that, that's all part of this process. But, I thought, we're bringing, and some people don't like the idea of even looking into it. You know, if you have a scientific experiment, that's kind of nice, because you can control all the variables. But when you have a social or political experiment, you can't control the variables. So you are opening up to unintended consequences, some may be good, some may be bad, but that's never been different in this nation. Back to our roots, they, you talk about a drastic social experiment, the Declaration of Independence, from a rule, the world's ruling empire at the time, was not a thing lightly done or lightly taken. And I'm not trying to make an analogy to anything we're doing being that consequential, but just that it's in the fabric of this nation. This is not reinventing the rule, or the wheel. These laws have been in place, and a lot of communities have done this, and they're still here and standing today, you know? Williamsport is not going to disappear off the map, because we vote to approve the electorate having a choice in November on the ballot. And as a little side note to that, I've heard it mentioned different times, "Oh, we particularly chose this..." chose this time because it's the lowest looked-at election, lowest turnout, you're trying to sneak it in." No. If we were trying to sneak it in, we had the option to bring this up much later in this cycle, where it would have come up, we voted on, and there would have been barely time to discuss it, and people run. There's that big of a window. We chose the biggest part of the window that we could. And I look at it the opposite, because it is usually a low-turnout election. There's not a lot of competing questions or races. This is going to be the centerpiece that people will have, so it's going to draw the attention. If you want to sneak something in, you put it in amongst a lot of other things. You don't put it in when it's going to stand out. Hopefully, this won't be a low-turnout, low voter-turnout election because of this being on the ballot. But just, the process I thought about was, there was the Declaration of Independence, which is great. All men are created equal. It's a great goal. They were right and righteous to say that and declare that and have that as the principle. However, in reality, a lot of the people in this country at the time, especially a certain segment who were slaves, didn't, did not, were not afforded that freedom until much later. Did that mean it disqualified that? No. It meant the idea was out there to be debated and talked about, and pushed through one way or another. It was a very costly way to resolve it, but we did resolve that. And we didn't go right to a constitution. We went to Articles of Confederation, which they tried for a while, and, "That's not working. Let's do something else." It's not a perfect system, because government is, really, what is it? It's people. It's a social contract. None of us are perfect. And when you get a lot of imperfect people together, you're going to have imperfect results at times. But if you can keep focused on principles, on working together, on cooperating, even if you don't agree, even on big issues, finding ways to work it out later on, the social contract works. And it's worked in this nation for very well, for a long time. And it's being tested right now. It is very fiber in a lot of ways throughout this nation. I'm hopeful, and I got to say this, I'm not at all dismissive of the home rule group and the things, obviously, they have their thoughts together. I have their documents here. I took notes about what people said that I'm going to share with other council members. Because that, I'm going to vote for this tonight, but that doesn't make your issue, in my mind, irrelevant or disqualified. This is still a viable issue for this community. And it does take time, like Councilman Henderson said. And it should take time. It should take time to work through these, because it's not a knee-jerk reaction. There's a lot of different reasons for doing it. The reason I'm focused on it, and I've talked to people, and I've heard conversations with people and had them, but, you know, overall, in my experience, you have a sphere of people that you interact with, and I can't go by that as the total barometer, because it's not widespread enough, and I don't have time to poll everybody. So I have to focus on an issue or a principle that I think is most important in this. That's how I've sorted it out. And my principle and issue that I've used to weigh this out is, we have challenges in the city ahead. We have challenges right now. We have them ahead. There's going to be changes coming to the city in a lot of different ways. Is there a better way to meet those challenges and issues in the future than the form of government we have now? I don't have the answer to that. That's why I'd like a commission, and that's why I'm focused on the one way to do it. Because I'm trying to keep it in a realm where I can deal with things in increments that are going to be able to think through and weigh out in a shorter period of time. So how are we going to meet those? I don't know if changing the form of government, I'm not advocating for that. I'm advocating for a study to be done. And as a side note to that study, one thing Ed Fosnot said, "If there are any expenses incurred," the commission does not have to incur expenses, "but if they do, there are DCED grants available that the city can apply for to help offset those costs." So there are a lot of, you know, issues, valid questions. I have questions. One of my questions is going to be, each form that they look at, what are the financial ramifications? That's going to be huge, to change to a different form, a different setup. And that whole universe of questions there. So I'm not going to drone on any longer. I just tried to, you know, share my mind and my heart, and I will be voting for this tonight. But my hope is that, if nothing else, this has opened up publicly the conversation in the city about city government in a way that just, "Oh, did you see what they did last week?" Or, "Did you see what happened last week?" Or, "How this was done or that?" This is a more fundamental, constructive, and it could be. Our job is going to be to keep it from being divisive, but to make it productive, not just for November, but for the future. To keep having conversations about our community, our government, what's best going to work in the future. And the other thing that Councilwoman Mealy talked about was the attendance, and Ed did say he was pleased with the attendance. And it was an oversight on our part to schedule it the night of the opening of the Crosscutters. We really didn't, you know, it was an oversight. We didn't look at that part of the calendar. It wasn't on the radar that particular night. Once we had it scheduled, it was too late to change it. And I know there were several people at the Crosscutters who would have been there that evening that represented various points of view. And I want to say this, too. I know amongst those of us on council, all seven of us, there is not a monolithic viewpoint about what outcome anybody should desire. There's not a monolithic viewpoint on why this has been brought up. Everybody's sorted through this and is still in the process, in a lot of ways, of going through the thinking and investigation process about the whole thing. So it's a learning thing for all of us, but hopefully, we're going to keep it positive all the way through. So, thank you, President Williamson.
Absolutely. One last thing I'd like to add to all of this is to agree with Mrs. Katz, and others have said this, too. The public is not fully educated about the process, the merits of having a study or not having a study, and of course, about the forms of government. But I think that four months, as others have said, is a timeframe to have that discussion, to inform ourselves as individuals about the merits of having a study or not having a study. And one of the things that I indicated on behalf of council at the town hall meeting was that we're going to host, initiate, and it was a good suggestion by someone at that meeting, to do that in a variety of places across our community, not just here in City Hall or in a downtown facility, but host the opportunity for people to engage and educate themselves about the process and about the merits of starting with a study. Basically, the decision whether or not to help them to get enough information to make the decision on whether or not to vote yes on creating a commission, if this passes this evening in November. What we won't be doing, because we shouldn't, between now and November, is talking about the strengths and weaknesses of various forms of government. I think Mr. Henderson pointed that out. That's not council's job. That would be, if the voters approve a commission, the commission's job, to investigate and then inform the public about the merits of various forms of government. So at this point, tonight, we're making a decision. Do we put a question on a ballot? But over the next four months, then, the public will need to make a decision about whether or not to support the study of the question. And while there's no legal requirement, I guess, that we would foster the discussion and education process about how to vote on that question, I think it's our moral responsibility to do so. And we will, if this passes, figure out how to do that effectively, so that as many people can participate as possible. And so, anybody who wants to assist council with that is more than welcome to offer suggestions or host events and that sort of thing. So, that said, are there any final comments or questions from members of council on the ordinance in final reading? And, yeah, I guess I just offer that. Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in final reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance carries in final reading. One of the things that will happen next is that the city solicitor and I will be meeting with the county board of elections, or at least the person in charge of voter services, to understand what the next steps are in terms of the implications of getting on the ballot and circulating petitions for people interested in offering themselves up as candidates for the commission. We will do that in short order, and then there will be announcements that come from either voter services or from the city, or, I hope, from both, that indicate that process. So anybody, as many people as are interested will know exactly how they can offer their services as candidates on that commission. And so I guess we'll need to set that meeting in the next five days, or at least...
After the five days.
After the five days, okay.
Because that's when it's filed.
Okay. I will talk to you after the meeting to start working on that. One final thing before we move to the next item on the agenda. I appreciate and respect and admire my colleagues, all six of them, and all, every single member of the public that I've engaged with, either in a formal meeting or in private, and the quality of the discussions and debates that we've had over this issue in the last three weeks, and really in months and years before that. This is how democracy works and how it works well. I look forward to continuing this. It's not been personal. It's not been political. It's been passionate. It's been well-informed. And there are people across this nation who could learn from how we've conducted this discussion. And so I applaud all of you that I've engaged with. So now, moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's been a long time since I've looked at the agenda here. I believe we're on ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget in final reading. Mrs. Katz, or not Mrs. Katz, Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget, project budget for the city of Williamsport for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2018 to June 30th, 2023.
Motion second on the ordinance in final reading.
Second.
Hearing motion second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you, and good evening.
Do we need you to tap you awake?
I am very fascinated because, and a great interest, because my father was very, did sort of the same thing back in the early 70s, you know?
Did you attend those meetings as a wee little one?
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you. And on the capital budget?
Thank you. Again, this ordinance on second reading is to adopt a proposed six-year capital program for the city of Williamsport. And as I stated before, this document serves as a planning tool for the city, with the first two years structured more as an action plan. It also satisfies River Valley Transit regulatory requirements related to our pendant capital program. There's four sections to the report. The status section, status report section, the second is actually the proposed capital projects, budget by department, then the third section is potential funding sources, and finally, the last section is narrative from the various departments speaking to what they have proposed with six-year capital budget. At the last meeting, I said the planning commission would review this. At their next meeting, which they did, and they did provide a positive recommendation to council on the program. The total six-year capital program is approximately $79 million. However, again, the first two years, which are the priority projects, amounts to $26 million. And this brings me to the memo that you received this evening, which provides you with some recommended changes, which were suggested by council at the first reading of the capital budget. And there were three that are listed on that memo, and they're changes to section two, which is the actual six-year program. The first one is on Ways Garden, which we did not, we indicated it was going to be rescheduled in the status report, but it didn't show up in the program itself. So we're adding Ways Garden to the recreation section on page two of that particular section. The project estimate would be $150,000. And you'll see that change, as we've highlighted in yellow, what is being recommended to be changed. And also, we've indicated in the potential funding source section that that would be funded by split between donations and DCNR. The second change was related to Public Safety Building, which is on page three of the proposed program, and is recommended that be removed from the capital budget based on recommendations received by the architect involved with that particular project. And then, thirdly, the public safety facilities improvements on page three, again, of the proposed program, was recommended to add $550,000 in the 2018-19 fiscal year. And these improvements would be split between the police, $75,000, and fire department, $475,000 for improvements to department facilities. And again, those numbers were in the highlighted yellow in the pages that we are recommending for changes based on your thoughts and ideas, my recommendations at the last meeting.
Thank you. And let me just comment real quick on that change. As we had discussed at the last meeting, work that council has initiated over the last, I believe it was about 16, 18 months, in terms of studying the viability of maintenance and upgrades to existing facilities versus new facilities. We determined that the cost of maintenance and upgrades to existing facilities was much lower than we feared, thanks to quite a bit of investigation by the Public Works Committee, or, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Committee, as well as some work that we had hired Tony Visco's company... Visco's company to do on our behalf. And so, we thought that the capital budget should reflect that. We asked administration to work out some, you know, take out one, or suggest how to take out one and put in some others. In essence, we have a ballpark figure that totals about $1 million. Those are rough estimates at this point. $450,000 of those dollars already appeared in the capital budget in terms of maintenance and upgrades to City Hall. And so, to get to $1 million, then, $550,000 were introduced in terms of public safety upgrades. Again, those are ballparks of $75,000 for police department facilities. And this, and this is limited to SRT Building on Fourth Street. Again, that's not an exact number by any means. And then, about whatever the rest was, $475,000 for upgrades that would be probably at fire headquarters. All of those numbers are, in essence, fungible, movable. And I'm hoping on the high side, I think, in the discussions that we had with Mr. Visco, where he was not locked in on precise numbers either, because we didn't ask him to lock in on precise numbers, he indicated a range across various facilities that probably totaled somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million, which is, of course, much, much less than $12 million for a new public safety building that we had estimated prior. And so, what I asked Mr. Nichols to do was have the, make a recommendation on an amendment tonight that would take that $12 million out and then kind of distribute the rough estimate of $1 million across the three facilities spread out over a couple of years. Of course, as members of council will know, we have $450,000 borrowed, I think it was borrowed last year, ready to go for at least some of those upgrades and maintenance to this building. And so, those could proceed in this year based on the planning work that we've been doing together with the administration. And then, we can work on funding and planning for the other facilities, as public safety has been working closely with the fire and police department, as well as, of course, Mr. Visco, to think those things through. Now, we just have to figure out how to finance them. So, that's the explanation for that. I will open it up then for comments or questions, or also, an amendment that would adopt the three changes that the administration has given us this evening at our request. Mr. Smith.
I would care to make the motion that we accept these changes as an amendment to the capital projects budget.
Thank you. Is that a clear enough motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I hear a motion in a second. Comments or questions on the motion to amend? Mr. Smith.
In prior discussions, and we've spent, again, quite a bit of time looking at the pluses and minuses of a public safety building, and when you get really involved in looking at the cost, we always know that whatever you plan, it's always more than that. And with the reduction in possible state funding, which we know the budgeting of the state of what that situation currently is, and we also don't know in planning the future with the federal government. I just read the other day, and probably you did too, John, that CDBG money is most likely going to be cut quite a bit. So, that puts us in a position that a public safety building, we'd be looking at quite a number of years away, and also trying to come up with grants here, grants there, applying for grants, perhaps not getting them because of the funding not available. And then, when we had Mr. Visco look at this building, and I think all of us were quite shocked when he came up and showed us the available space that we have, and by taking some of the things that we have and moving them around, we have quite a bit of space left over. So, in our meetings with the fire department and finding out what their current needs are and what their wishes would be if we didn't do a public safety building, I think we've come to some pretty good compromises of how we could move forward without looking at $11, $12 million or perhaps more. So, I think that this is good, that we're putting these numbers in as an amendment. And I think as we move forward this year yet, and I had spoken to Chief Heckman and also to Chief Dimick, that we're going to try to get some numbers, and obviously, that'll change from year to year, but if we have some basic ideas of what we're looking at number-wise, that's going to help us in the future as we move forward with budgets for the, over the next few years. So, we are going to do that. That'll give us enough time to do the planning, and them to do the planning on what they desire, and also what's desired in changing things in this building. So, I think, based on Public Safety Committee, I think we're headed in the right direction by doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on the, we're still on the motion to amend. Hearing no other comments or questions on the motion to amend. Mrs. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is amended. Back on the ordinance in final reading, as amended, other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Well, actually, I know that Finance had requested the presence of Mr. Ray, just because there were a handful of projects, which, Mr. Ray, thank you kindly for delineating in such detail in the capital budget, but we did have a couple of questions on some of those that we hadn't heard speak of before, and so, I wanted to follow up. Is there any way I could get you to up to the podium, Mr. Ray? Thank you. Hello. I can't speak for all my fellow members of Finance. I know one of the primary questions, which seems to be contradicted by the narrative, is that in the capital budget, there's a budget of $8,780 per year for 2017 and 2018 for the website?
I didn't put those numbers in there.
Okay. I'm just, I'm not entirely certain, but it seems as though that too should change. My understanding was that we were paying $4,390 per year for four years, or, this year, and then the four following, three following years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, those numbers should be $4,390 each one.
What page are you on?
I apologize, I'm on page four of the second section. There was some confusion during previous meetings, and Finance had been under the impression that that was the authorized amount, but nobody else seemed to be quite certain, so we wanted to confirm that. And a few other questions, we all know that where it says undetermined funding, of course, some of those things are likely to get deferred until the next year anyway, but there were a handful of projects that were proposed to be funded out of the general fund budget. And I was curious, I'd never heard any discussion about public Wi-Fi in the city parks before, but I noticed we have it budgeted for the upcoming budget session. And it's a, it's a, it's a small amount, it's just, I guess, before we authorized a capital projects budget that cited a project that no one was aware of, previously, I was wondering what, where that had come from and what we were thinking there, and why it had become a priority for, for next year.
I see it as an opportunity to engage, get more people to utilize our parks, you know? They're not really being utilized that heavily, from what I see, driving around, so while they're there, I mean, just give them more options to utilize the, stay connected to what they're doing, stuff like that. Communities across the country are doing this, they have them all over the parks, they're wiring their whole entire cities for public Wi-Fi where they can.
I think there's also a corollary, almost anti-public Wi-Fi movement going on in some parts of the country, that, that looks at the idea that when we're in public spaces like that, we should be interacting with one another instead of on our cell phones. So, I don't know, I can't say for one way or the other without further discussion whether or not I support that initiative in terms of our budget at the end of the year. But I know that, as someone who actually does regularly utilize the parks and who sees people doing all sorts of fun things there, like LARPing, which I, live-action role-playing, there's a group, there's a group that comes out with swords in Brandon Park every, every summer, and, and it's quite interesting, anyway. There are, there are a good number of people in the parks, and I do think that we should have some further discussions about that before we move forward with the initiative and the budget in the autumn. Another question that I had, security camera upgrades certainly do seem, I mean, I'm not sure, when was the last time that we invested any funding in security cameras in City Hall?
We've put a couple of new ones down in codes. I mean, they're like $400 bucks a piece, roughly, thereabouts, for the ones we've had installed. But there's probably about 12 or 13 other ones that need to be upgraded that are old and outdated, the old-style cameras, so they're eventually going to go, they're eventually going to go out at some point and fail, so...
You said 12 or 13, right?
Probably 12 or 13.
So, at $400, that's about $5,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're actually looking at something under the $10,000 that we've got in that budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd better figure high than low.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, that's generally a wise idea. And then, the, just a handful of questions. In the narrative, it says that we're budgeting $75,000 a year for building access control systems. In the budget, it says that we're budgeting $15,000 a year. I'm not sure which number is accurate there. $75,000 a year, frankly, would strike me as astronomical to control access to City Hall. $15,000 still strikes me as pretty high, but, but I'm, I, because there were some differences between the narrative and the numbers in a couple of places, I was wondering which was which.
I think they probably just, because they spread that $75,000 over five years, and came up with $15,000 a year.
Okay, so it's $15,000 is the accurate number in this case?
Yeah.
Okay. Understood. And, and even though we don't, do we have, even though we don't have a potential funding source, we can expect to possibly see that as early as the budget this fall?
We can do that, that's just on the radar. I mean, we can sit there and switch out these doors.
We often, as we saw with Ways Garden, we deferred that this year by a year, you know? I mean, it happens all the time. I'm just asking to see sort of where we're at with, if we've figured out a funding source in the meantime, since we put this together, and, and then, the, the, what does MIS stand for? I'm sorry, it wasn't specified in the narrative.
That means management information systems.
Okay, got it. And those are specifically upgrades to finance software?
Not necessarily. That could be anything. I mean, that could be, that could run the gamut of hardware, software, anything, anything that falls within MIS.
Okay. And the front-loaded $25,000 this year is just the, in this upcoming budget year? I guess, the reason I'm asking all these questions right now, Mr. Ray, is just because I'm trying to clarify that some of this stuff is new to us as council people, and we're likely to be questioning it in the fall on the budget. And so, perhaps, do you understand what I'm saying? That I didn't, I didn't want it to come as a shock. It's a small amount of money, and I know that, but, but when every little bit counts, I think we're sort of trying to make certain that we're getting the, the most that we, that we can for the investment we're putting in. And, and so, I guess it might be wise if we could, not necessarily in this format, but at some point, talk a little further about exactly what that, what, what some of that entails. I firmly agree with you that cloud-based computing seems to be the way that everything's headed, and to the extent that we can, as a, to the extent that we can as a city safely keep that, keep information out there in the cloud, perhaps that's our wisest option. But, but I do think that we, we need to have a discussion about ongoing costs for cloud-based versus ongoing costs for server-based, and, and I look forward to those in the next couple of months before we get to, to the fall budget. I think that was it for my questions on this, on this particular, on those, that segment. I don't know if the rest of Finance, I know that we all were sort of questioning some things, I don't know if anyone else had questions.
No, I think they've covered it.
Okay. Bonnie, sorry.
Mrs. Katz. To go into the rewiring of City Hall, Mr. Smith, didn't we do some of the rewiring for, because I'm reading what you have in here, currently, the city and police voice, data networks are all, are all over the place. I thought this was straightened out, that, the, the information of this is in the back.
I'm, I'm not at all familiar of why this is in here. I've not had any discussion concerning it. I have no rationale for that, so at this point, I cannot make any comments. I would like to see rationale behind all of this, and I think Mr. Ray knows where I come from, I want to see total 100% rationale on these things. And I saw that, Mrs. Katz, and I think what we would need, if there's questions on it, is further rationale of how those numbers were come up with, and what's the reason behind it.
You know, it's, if there, if there's a problem...
Well, this is, this, he's talking about rewiring City Hall network cables. Don't we have network cables currently into the offices, the controller's office, the city clerk's office? Aren't they Cat 6 cables?
Cat 5.
Well, what do we need to change them for?
We need, the idea being that they would be run in a, in a manner that is easily accessible if there's ever an issue where you need to trace a cable. You have to either jump through the catwalk, up through the phone loft, it's very hard to, the way this building lays out doesn't make it conducive to properly wire a building to currently, to function properly.
Typically, buildings that we get into, this is standard throughout the whole area. We get in ceilings where you find six cables that aren't even being used, and where they go, because they don't take them out, older cables. So, I would certainly think that this would be kind of low on our, our agenda, because typically, cables don't go bad. I mean, put connectors on them, and unless somebody cuts them, a contractor, you know, you put them in there and they'll last 20 years, 30 years. So, I'd like to see a lot more rationale before I would want to approve $30,000 for rewiring network cabling.
And, and I would say also that, just in general, combining all of this, and this is said probably every year with the capital budget, clearly, it's more than a wish list, but it is also, council support of the capital budget as a whole does not indicate that any particular project is approved, or would even be supported by an individual member of council.
Right.
And so, clearly, we'll have, again, opportunity to address each one of these projects on an individual basis, and, and based on these questions, of course, it wouldn't be a surprise if there'd be very close scrutiny on, on the rationale behind it. So, that, there's often a point at this point of the capital budget debate where that statement's made, so, I'll say it now.
I guess, as you pointed out, it's a wish list.
Sure.
It's a wish list, but we also want people to be prepared, we will have questions.
Yes, absolutely. On all regards, I agree. Other questions or comments from members of council?
Simply one question regarding the, the small change to the numbers on page four under city, new city website. Mr. Smith, the, the amounts are supposed to be different. Do we need to amend the capital budget, or is, can we simply, it's, it's a $4,390 difference, they're, they're doubled in both of the first two years.
Sounds to me like it should be amended.
It should be? Okay, all right.
So, explain that a little bit better for me.
For some reason, the amount, the expenditure for the website in 2017, 2018, and 2018, 2019 is, is twice what we authorized.
Okay.
And we have already authorized that spending moving forward for the next several years. So, this is simply reflective of something that city, that, that, that we have at this point voted to contract. And, and so, we know what the money will be, and it is not accurate in the capital budget. Consequently, I would make a motion to amend the line "new city website" on page four of section two of the capital budget, to read in year 2017, 2018, $4,390, and in year 2018, 2019, also $4,390.
I hear a motion, is there a second? I hear a motion and a second. Comments or questions on the motion to amend? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the amendment carries, which brings us back now to the ordinance in final reading, twice amended. reading, twice amended. Mrs. Katz.
I just have one quick question since we have you up here. Is the 3-1-1 app going to be working more efficiently with the website as far as the website coming into play better?
Yeah.
Effective?
Yeah. It'll be integrated into our current, into our new website.
Can I ask the question of, are you getting results from department heads supplying you with the information? I think what I'm asking is, shouldn't the department heads come to you and if there is a problem, should you be going to them and saying, look, nothing is put on the web, on the 3-1-1 app or the website? You know, my, my first question with any of this has always been human.
Mm-hmm.
And if the humans are not putting the information out there, what good is either one of these? And, and I, and I'd like to know who is going to be responsible. Are you going to be responsible in your job description as far as going after this? Or is it up to the department heads to be doing this?
As far as putting stuff on the website?
Yes, mhm, to make sure that it's in there.
That would be, that would be part of the training that they're going to go through when, when we get to that point. Every department's going to have their own, somebody who's going to be responsible for making those changes.
And are you going to keep up with this and make sure that this is done? Because our website is only going to be as good as the information that's on it.
Yep.
Okay. I want that, you know, made perfectly clear. Same thing with the 3-1-1 app. Because I look at the 3-1-1 app and there's very little on that. I mean, you look at the calendar of events, there's nothing on there. And, and I didn't know whether that was due to the.
Well, the calendar of events is tied to our city's website calendar, which does not work at the moment.
That's what I was asking.
When they migrated it to their new hosting partner, they, they never fixed the calendar, even though I asked them to.
Okay, that's why I'm asking that. Okay, if that's going to come together eventually when this is all.
Yeah, that'll all come together.
Okay. That's, that was my question on.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
Yep, no problem.
Other comments or questions, members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance and final reading as amended.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is adopting the budget as approved and final reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance for a transfer ordinance, Mrs. Frank. Because this was added at my discretion after we received our packets, I'm going to ask you to read it in full.
An ordinance, transfer ordinance, be hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the following revisions to the 2017 general fund budget be made as follows. Section one, from surplus, unappropriated surplus, $600,000. Section two, to transfers, transfer to capital budgets, account 402, 402178140, revised budget, $600,000. The change is $600,000. Section three, be further ordained by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that this ordinance shall become effective upon final enactment of the ordinance.
Can I have a motion and a second on this ordinance in first reading?
So move.
Second.
Hearing motion and second, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you again. Since this ordinance, a transfer ordinance relates to the next item, the resolution to approve a settlement agreement, can I address both at the same time?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. The resolution which follows the transfer ordinance approves a settlement agreement with Lightcoming Supply. And this resolves the last issue related to the Williams Street redevelopment project. And the resolution for the settlement agreement comes from, or comes after five years of discussion, finally a mediation process. And the settlement called for a final payment of $360,000 to Lightcoming Supply, which will allow the city to close out the related RACB project and release a final payment to the city of approximately $500,000. And again, the settlement was much less than the demand and relates to pad development for the Williams Street redevelopment project and the Kohl's Department Store. So to cover this expenditure, the city is recommending a transfer of general fund unappropriated surplus to the city's capital budget account, which is the transfer ordinance in front of you. And these are funds that are generated, are being generated from a Benetton dividend which exceeded this year's budgeted amount and which not only benefits the city's capital account to resolve this particular litigation, but also adds to the city's bottom line for this year. Also, to meet our goal of closing out all three of the city's state RACB grants by the end of the year, an additional amount of money of approximately $240,000 as part of the transfer of unappropriated surplus. And this will front in approximately $150,000 of Bowman Field project expenses. And they will be reimbursed from a number of, or a variety of sources, including the Cross Gutters, MLB, the Visitors Bureau, and River Valley Transit. As we discussed with the Finance Committee and then approved by the President of City Council, as requested by, again, the Chair of the Finance Committee, handed out a memo which lists additional expenses that are being covered by this transfer or not being funded out of the RACB project. Specifically, you'll note that it's a construction management services which were needed for the second phase. And because of all the RACB requirements and because of the, the coordination needed with MLB, that was important to add to the project. And then there's also a change order which was to repair several rusted structural beams that were uncovered during the project. The Finance Committee did review this information on Tuesday. And at this point, I guess I'll defer back to the Chair for, for additional questions on the transfer ordinance and then the settlement agreement resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, I'm from Finance, and you only reviewed the, formally reviewed the, the settlement agreement, but feel free to comment.
Okay.
Because it's a discussion on the transfer ordinance as well.
Yeah, we, Finance only formally reviewed a relatively small part of this whole element, of this whole discussion. But, but the settlement, settlement agreement, we, we forwarded the settlement agreement to the full body of council with positive recommendation. The, the nuts and bolts of it is that in a longstanding disagreement over who exactly should pay for an exceptionally wet spring when the Kohl's development was happening and a number of other factors that, Lightcoming Supply, I believe it was, claimed that we owed them a substantial overage of, of the contract for. The, the final conclusive amount that we're paying them over and above what, what we initially agreed to is 690,000, I believe, and they had asked for 1.1 million. So one could say, I suppose we split the difference a little bit, but the settlement was relatively speaking in our favor. And, and wait, it was, it's been five years arriving at this particular number, five years arriving in a settlement agreement. And, and this is the only outstanding piece that is allowing, that is not allowing us to submit all of our forms direct to, to the Redevelopment and Capital Assistance Program for reimbursement. So this will allow us to finally close out that particular project, ideally finally close out that particular project, close it out from the city's perspective. The state still has to review all the forms, but it, it enables us to get the next step in, in the way. And, and of course, was the result of five years of legal rankling, so likely about as good as we're going to get. So Finance did forward this to the full body of council with positive recommendation. The transfer ordinance, on the other hand, reflects both some additional expenditures that will be made as part of the Bowman Field project and, and also covers the $360,000 still owed as part of this litigation settlement. And Mr. Nichols did give us information just today on the additional Bowman Field spending. Mr. Nichols, if I might ask a question, we had understood that all of the steel repairs were going to be covered by the redevelopment, by, by the RACB grant. That, I guess, is not the case?
Well, originally, there were other expenses that part of the project. So to come up with the, the $90,000 that's outside the RACB project, we had to determine which ones would be best suited to not include. And so that's why we picked that particular one, because it was a, it wasn't part of the original bid. It was just unit pricing and there was no specified amount in the contract.
But so the original bid somehow or another became more? I guess that's what I'm confused about when we.
No, it was, there was no price associated with that because it was unknown. So we just bid unit pricing that we could establish a change order if needed. But we did have to do a change order because we exposed a number of areas that needed some, some work. So the only thing that was bid was unit pricing. There isn't, the, the amount that we awarded did not include anything, anything in terms of particular cost for this. Just establish a unit price if we ran into something.
I, I guess what I'm curious about is when we initially had reviewed the spending under the, the RACB grant that we got of 1.5 million dollars, a number of the prime bids came in under estimates, which meant that we actually had about, as I recall, $60,000 left in the actual, in the grant itself, which at the time was estimated to be sufficient to cover the steel repairs that we found, that we had found to be necessary in Bowman Field. So you're telling me the total amount of the steel repairs is $22,000? I'm asking you where that $60,000 went.
Well, there was many more change orders than just that, that utilized that extra funding. The, the change order amount for the general was probably, Joe, do you remember? Close to $100,000, I think, totally, or?
I'm not sure what else it was.
Change one, again, we had to come, we had to pick and choose which one we wanted to use to match the RACB dollars. And so this was the, since this is just one number, this is one we chose that, that to take out of the equation in terms of the RACB project because of the amount. But there were other change orders that utilized that $60,000. This was not the only change order.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming, I guess, I'm, just, this is maybe not the entirety of the snapshot I would have hoped to have to understand where, where all the money went in the Bowman Field project. I understand what the city's additional exposure then becomes, but I don't understand exactly how all the other pieces fit together, including our initial expenditures. Frankly, the, you know, MLB's expenditures are off in, in their own hands as long as they're not impacting on our expenditures at all. But, but what went under grant funding and what went under our funding, I continue to be curious about. We can, obviously, that's not so much a, you know, a mechanism of the settlement agreement or the transfer ordinance, but, but I would like to understand it a little better here in future.
Yeah, we can, we have a change order log which you can review. And again, we had, we could have picked three that added up to $22,000.
Right.
We could have added, you know, it just happened that this one was close to the number that didn't fit. So that's why we picked it.
Understood. But what you're telling me basically is that the 1.5 million dollar project that the city undertook at Bowman Field is $90,000 of, well, $240,000 over budget, 150 of which will be covered by outside sources and.
Right. The total project, yeah, the total project, the Bowman Field, if you look at the two phases, came in about $2,695,000. And we, and we have revenue coming in about $2.6 million. So it's about the 90,000 differential. And so the construction management services and this one particular change order were the ones that we selected that, you know, were unfunded.
Okay. All right.
And we can always go back and ask for more RACB funds. So it's not to say that they won't be funded.
Well, that'd be great if you could, Mr. Nichols, but we, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what our exposure is here. Now, in the meantime, we've gotten lucky because the, our health insurance payment, which we had estimated at $400,000 in the budget last year, correct?
Right.
Actually came in at 1 million?
Right.
It was 1 million in the final number?
Plus, a little bit more than that.
Okay.
So there will be, again, not only to fund this capital projects, part of the equation, but also there'll be additional money that'll fall through to the, the bottom line once they, you know, close everything out for the fiscal year.
So we can expect to see something in the neighborhood of maybe $175,000 that will fall to the bottom line in the final analysis from the additional Benetton overage, correct?
Could be maybe 100.
Oh, okay. I, I thought we were looking at 150 in reimbursements for Bowman Field plus something over, it was $600,000 plus over what we expected, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we're looking at, at $150,000 in reimbursements from expenditures at Bowman Field, correct?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yes.
Okay. So then we've got $150,000 plus that will fall to the bottom line?
Right, right. From, from revenues from Bowman Field and from commitments from the Cross Gutters, commitments from the Visitors Bureau, and whatever River Valley Transit agreed to cover.
Understood.
So it'll be at least 150.
Got it. Okay. Well, that's certainly good news. Couldn't it come in a better year, I suppose, huh? Okay. All that said, I, as I said, Finance reviewed and asked some questions during the Finance Committee meeting and passed the settlement agreement to the full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you for that and for sorting out all of the various pieces required to make sure that we could understand both of these complex things that look simple on paper, but of course have a lot of back history behind them. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, we are on the ordinance, the transfer ordinance in first reading. So Mrs. Frank on that, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance passes in first reading. Next item on the agenda is resolution to approve settlement agreement. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution to approve a settlement agreement.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Nichols, anything further to add?
No, again, this was a result of a mediation process. Well, it was five years of, of back and forth discussions. We decided on a mediation process and, which lasted all day and, and actually two days, but finally both sides came to an agreement with the help of the mediator. So it was a very good and thorough process.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance, anything further to add? None? Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Allison?
Just one thing that Mr. Nichols confirmed to us in this settlement is that it definitely closes the book. The other party has agreed because it's been difficult to negotiate. And that's all I'm going to say about that. But this does not leave any doors open or expose us to any further action. It's, it's unfortunate the way things transpired that this happened. I mean, I'm not sure it's our fault, but that doesn't, the court doesn't really deal with those issues. So it does do what, it takes care of the problem and ends it, which is important at this point.
And then both on a, on the serious side, I think, you know, the Kohl's project, which this is a part, you know, has been a decade-long series of, of learning processes, shall we call them, for everyone involved in the city, both in council and, and administration and well beyond. And so it is good to get to what I think is a final point. I mean, there'll be some paperwork to get the final reimbursements and that sort of thing. And so the lessons learned, I hope, are of value above and beyond the, the development work that, that happened there. On a lighter note connected to all of that, I think this might then be either the final or second to final resolution for that binder that John's been keeping on the Kohl's project.
Got it written in the line.
Six-inch binder. And so this is resolution 439 or 440. Do you remember?
440.
Yeah, okay.
I was placing it at 040.
And so we should, you know, bronze that sucker and put it on a shelf somewhere. And so thank you, both of you in particular, for all the work that you've done over the last decade on this. Any other comments on the settlement agreement? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes. And the resolution is approved. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, could I offer a couple of comments about Mr. Rayo?
Sure.
Since I have the floor, I wanted to get a couple of things off my chest. No.
Not off your forehead.
No, I, I, someone would say that I thank John for his, his dedication over the years, tremendous dedication and all the tremendous things he did for the city. I certainly want to thank him for all the support he's given me over the decades. He helped me in many cases to make my job easier and, and having someone behind you and supporting, you know, everything that you try. you know, everything that you try to do is tremendous. He's been, been a tremendous colleague. And the other thing I really want to say is he's been a trusted and just a great friend, which is, I really appreciate, and I hope that lasts for another few decades. And the last and most important thing I want to say is since he, at this age that he now is at, he qualifies for a free bus pass. So I just, I just want to make sure he understands that. Thank you.
It'll take me a second to recover from that. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing solicitor to sign some documents. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the solicitors to sign in the city clerk's absence, be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City, we in sport that the Williamsport City Council authorizes the attorneys from the two solicitor offices, Casseau and Bonner and McCormick Law Firm, to sign documents on behalf of the city clerk of Williamsport in the event that said clerk is sick, temporarily incapacitated, or otherwise unable to attend city council meetings and/or sign the required documents. The attorneys in the solicitor's office are hereby permitted to sign any documents on behalf of the city clerk, but only to the extent that the city clerk would have authorized to sign.
Thank you. Come a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
Don't move. Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Smith, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. I have nothing to add.
Was this reviewed by committee?
That's odd for an attorney to say.
We play him a flat fee. Was this reviewed by committee? I'm sorry.
Was it reviewed by our committee?
I didn't think so. The one thing I would add is, is, is a personnel issue, so it's nobody's business. So any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda-
Nothing further.
If I'm, are we down to Harb? Okay. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for Harb. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items this evening. At 619 West Fourth Street, it involves some slate work, primarily at 105254 Vine Avenue. It involves some tongue-in-roof porch floor work. At 957 Vine Avenue, it involves some window and gutter work as well as painting with the wonderful color names of bird's eye maple, dart hunter green, and rembrandt ruby. At 923 Vine Avenue, it involves window sill work and replacing rodent wood from the soffit facing leaves, as well as painting those same colors, again, bird's eye maple, dart hunter green, and rembrandt ruby. And then finally at 328, 326, 328 Locust Street, replacing missing porch spindles and doing some painting on the porch, including with summit gray and, this one's a bit confusing to me, polar bear brown. I don't know what that means, but I bet it's a specific color. Again, I have a motion and a second on the request for these certificates.
Don't move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please, on the certificates of appropriateness.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those certificates are approved. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the public works meeting minutes of March 14th, March 28th, and April 11th, 2017. Can I have a motion and a second to approve these?
Don't move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held Thursday, July 6th at 7:30 PM here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, June 26th at noon as the Planning Commission and at 4 PM as the Recreation Commission. On Tuesday, June 27th at 11:30 AM is the redevelopment authority. Wednesday, July 5th, well, Tuesday, July 4th is Independence Day, and given some of